Okay, so I'll, I think we're ready to go. So we're gonna, I'm gonna call to order the Building Insights Subcommittee meeting at 6:02. And you have the agenda and some backup in front of you. And I'm now going to have Bart Mallow, Michael McKay, is it Michael? Jeff Atkins here, to talk about the change order summary. So, Michael, all you.
Good evening, everyone. So, in front of you, July 2022 Change Order Summary. We have a few items on that agenda tonight, miscellaneous from the construction that's going on this summer. We do have a flooring number there at the top that, if you recall, we pulled the flooring from this bid pack for this summer just due to budgetary constraints. So, but we do have some flooring for the Fox Computer Lab that's going in. And then the, the other one there, the bigger one, if you will, is the ball mix that we have over at Dakota High School. The original ball mix that was specked was not correct. So we, we have to put the correct ball mix in. It was a different color, and obviously, we didn't want to put the incorrect color in. So, that's that one there. And then, the other few there, just miscellaneous mechanical and electrical items that have popped up with work commencing.
So, none of these items that are on here, the Fox, is that something we weren't aware of, so it wasn't bid, or we just needed to add it after we were into the project?
Yeah, well, if you recall, if all the flooring was pulled out of bid pack four, Fox Computer Lab was included in the bid pack. So, the flooring in that room needs to be removed and replaced. So that would've been picked up by the contractor if the flooring was bid.
Oh.
The original flooring scope.
So this was added because when you got, when you're finishing the project, you realized that it didn't make sense not to replace the carpeting at this time, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanted to pursue that project. We didn't want to hold off on it.
Oh.
We put new furniture in there. So we didn't want to do all this and then have to come back years later, pull all the furniture out and put new flooring at that point.
Right.
So, this is the one piece of flooring we recommended proceeding with, so that we didn't have to pull apart the whole computer lab again down the road.
Which one required layer cost?
What size room is that?
Just a little 900 square foot classroom.
Geez.
Eight thousand dollars for?
Well, that is crazy.
Yeah, we, we used, they, they have a unit pricing of eight bucks a square foot to remove and reinstall carpet.
That's a lot.
It's going right now for what? Half, about a third of it's LVT, the other half, two-thirds of it's carpet. So, eight bucks a square foot is the going rate for flooring these days.
Wow.
So, it's that, that price, plus their little bit of markup that they get by contract for it, for the 15%.
How big is the room?
900 square feet, or thereabouts. Standard-sized classroom. So it's.
That would be 7,200, so, but that's.
But then they get a 15% markup on their change orders. That's, that's the difference there.
Is that what the bids are coming in at, for carpet?
Yes.
So, the eight dollars a square foot, is that sort of the industry average right now, for carpeting?
You know, you can do cheaper, like an LV, or a VCT, the little 12 by 12 VCT. It's kind of gone wayside. It's just, it's a cheaper-looking product.
Oh, the, you mean the carpet, 12 by 12s?
No, the, that's, that'll be cheaper, if we want to do something cheaper.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we should.
But in this case here, the carpet we put in this district is an extremely high-quality carpet. It's the Collins and Aitman carpet.
So it lasts longer.
It'll, quite honestly, the color'll last, or the carpet'll last, the style.
Right.
So is this a glue-down carpet?
Yes.
So it must be pretty high-quality.
It's, yes. It's the kind that you can clean, that we've, you know, if we spill something on it, it can be cleaned, it doesn't stain, doesn't leave a stain there. Those stains stick locked in. So, Wiggly, Wiggly's been very adamant about that, making sure that our carpets specs are much higher quality than what they were in the past, to make sure those carpets last 20-plus years.
If they brought us a million-dollar thing, we would've just passed by. But, you know, eight thousand dollars, you got a question?
You know what, I mean, you, you've been around long enough to know, I mean, typically in the middle of a summer, this summary is two pages long.
Right.
We, we, again, we never like to bring changes to you, but, yeah, we feel pretty comfortable bringing it as such a short change order to some of you in the middle of a very busy summer.
Yeah, that's true. So these are all things, okay.
And these, we've had these deals before, and these split systems have to reroute the condensates.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Yeah, the mechanical inspector requires this, and, though there's really, I mean, we could either wait till the mechanical inspector asks us, and, or we can take care of it right now. We have the opportunity to take care of it right now, while, before the kids get back in the building. We had to deal with that later at Mohegan last year, and we just didn't want to be at the same spot at Mohegan like we were, where it was very, more challenging to do it after the school year started.
So, I'm, I'm gonna sound ignorant, I guess, but what is ball mix, if you don't mind me asking? Is that just the stuff they put down around the field, in the outer part of it?
Yeah.
It's the infield mix.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so if you think about your softball fields, they typically have a red clay mix in there.
Right.
What was specified by the architect was just a general, call it gravel-looking gray material.
Uh-huh.
And once you mix those two things together, you'll never get it back to the red mix on there, so.
Oh, okay.
So that's what was ordered, that's what was delivered. We stopped it before we installed it, where that was definitely not what the intent should have been, to put that mixture in there, so.
Okay.
So that material will get used around the district eventually. I mean, it's not gonna go to waste, that material will be used to.
Okay.
For any other of the fields, middle school fields, the district will use that. The grounds department will take possession of that and use it.
Okay.
So this will provide the red mix on it, so, so fix the field. But even though there's a big cost for it, really, all you, what you did is you bought a bunch, a bunch of extra stock of the material.
Right. So it's red clay mix, something like that?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the general term I always call it.
Remember the parents that used to put that in a donation?
Yes, I do remember.
We stopped them, said, "What are you doing?", and they said, "We're donating this".
Yeah, I remember.
They were putting it on the fields for their kids.
Mm-hmm.
Correctly.
Yeah.
So where's this, the excess being stored?
It's over at Dakota High School right now. I don't know where it's gonna eventually get stored, but it's sitting over at Dakota right now.
How much is there?
I don't know, about 60, probably, about 60 ton, I'd say, at least.
It's a lot.
Yes.
We have room for that over there, or? Is it outside? I mean, is it weather, gonna get weathered out of it, or?
It's probably around on campus. I, I can't remember where we, I don't know where it's stored right now. It's sitting out there on campus right now. So they'll probably, they could use it on the baseball fields, JV baseball field there, and Seneca, and Cheyenne. We could probably lose a lot of it just at that campus, but there's other sites that want to use it.
These other items, why are there change orders? Why were they missed on the original bid?
The mechanical engineer just didn't put, you told it the mechanical items on there? Is that what you said?
Yeah, the rest, I mean, the flooring, you said that we didn't have a price for that, that time, so this is the, this is why we have it now. The ball mix was just, we got the wrong stuff, but the other things, these are just, they weren't on the original bid, right?
Correct. So this is, there.
George has given you the details of it.
There's a disagreement between a mechanical engineer and the mechanical inspector of what is right and what is not right on this. Mechanical inspector's gonna win, at the end of the day. So, the mechanical engineer is interpreting the rules one way, the mechanical inspector's interpreting them a different way. We're never gonna get a final inspection unless we go with what the mechanical inspector requires. So, it's all, it deals with the condensate line that's in there. The concern of the mechanical inspector is that that unit was gonna run 24/7, 365 days a year, and eventually, in the winter, that condensate line will freeze, and the unit will freeze up on that. So it's not technically required by code, but in all practicality, in Michigan, you need to have it, or else that unit is gonna have a problem. And we have to have those units running throughout the winter.
So.
So we had a discussion with the mechanical engineer to say, moving forward, next summer, we're gonna do more of these units. Make sure you include the condensate drying on the original drawing, so we're not paying for it as a change order after the matter.
Yeah, 'cause these little extra things that are missed, they add up. So, whether you need them or not, they still add up, they should've been on the original bid.
But there, Rob, there's not a job that goes by in the world that doesn't have change orders.
Well, I know, but when you have a ton of them, when you have.
I think we.
Well, they have a lot going on.
Well, everybody does. I mean, it's no excuse, I understand, once in a while.
You're in the business, I'm sure you got change orders.
Do what?
You're in the business, you know that.
Not this many.
Well.
I never had this many, so.
Are you taking care of 21 schools, schools? I don't think so, probably, right? I mean, your projects aren't this big, and with the hope, anyway. I think, actually, our change orders in the recent past are less than what they have been in, in past months.
Well, that's why we have a contingency to cover it.
Right. But, yeah, I understand what about the bid package stuff, and, but these look like things that they uncovered as they were doing the project, I think.
Well, that's what I was asking, some of those weren't, some of those weren't uncovered, and don't run a business that way.
In the bid.
So, if you did run a business, you wouldn't be in business very long, so.
Okay. All right. All right, then, is anybody else? All right, I guess we can end the meeting, Ron.
Okay, that's it. We have no other items this evening, so the meeting is concluding at 6:13.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
To order the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting of August 8th, please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first I'd like to excuse Mr. Bednard from the meeting today. He cannot be here because of his other personal matters. Next is additions and deletions. We do have to amend the agenda this evening.
So moved.
Wait a minute, let me get it on me so I know what I was talking about. I lost the...oh, yeah, it's item...
F7.
First, we need a motion to adjourn. So you made the motion, Mr. Pearl?
Yeah.
I get a support.
So support.
Sobah supports. All those in favor of amending the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are adding in under F, an F7. It's a personnel transaction. The candidate just notified Dr. Blanchard this morning about the acceptance of an offer, and it's a critical need. So we're going to go ahead and push it through for this evening. You'll have it for this evening. So I'd like to motion to add F7, approved personnel transaction, hire of an administrator, food service, director of food, service, and nutrition. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I'm on.
Go ahead.
Moved by Ms. Demingzak.
Supports.
And you'll support it. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is presentations and...
No.
You don't have any this evening?
No, there are none.
Okay. And then item D is next, and that is the general consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pearl. Do I have a second? Do I have support for the...
Support.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Mr. Sobah for the general consent agenda. Are there any members that want an item removed for discussion or have questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have some retirements this evening. Beth, if you would mind reading the...
We do. We have Ms. Beatty. I believe she's here this evening, so we could have her come to the microphone.
Again, looks too young to retire.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Whereas Janet Beatty has served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of 14 years in the clerical unit. Whereas Janet Beatty, through her leadership, has had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Janet Beatty, a conscientious, loyal, hardworking employee, has elected to retire. And whereas Janet Beatty will be missed by all her school colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the superintendent of schools and the administration, extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District on the 8th day of August 2022, be made a permanent part of the records of the school district and a copy sent to Janet Beatty as an expression of our appreciation. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations.[815.51][815.51](APPLAUSE). So this evening, we have Todd Distelrap, principal of Chippewa Valley High School, to speak regarding Janet. So Todd?
Thank you. I just want to say a few words for Janet on this occasion. I think that we all know that it takes many people to make a school work. Sometimes we may take for granted some of the support positions. So today, I want to shine a great big spotlight on one of those positions and a person who has served in that position with great knowledge, dedication, and work ethic. So today, we recognize and congratulate Janet Beatty, CVHS attendance clerk, for her contribution to our school and for her retirement. Janet worked for our district for a little over 14 years. She brought high energy and customer service and genuine care to do a thorough job and be a good team player. She gave 110% to CVHS attendance for the past nine years. The attendance office is a busy, busy place. In a school of 2,500 students and 130 teachers, there's a lot happening with attendance. On a daily basis, parents let us know that students will be arriving late, leaving early, or staying home sick. The phones are ringing constantly, and students are coming and going constantly. And a lot in education relies on attendance. Success and failure for students, student needs and supports needed, school funding, all relies on attendance. So with that said, I really want to thank Janet for her tireless work. She's been so solid and reliable in keeping everything running smoothly, and even through the most difficult of situations. In the past, difficult situations were senior skip day, or possibly 300 senior girls wanting to leave early to get their hair done for prom. More recently, it would have to do with everything COVID brought, virtual learning, optional attendance, quarantines, and all sorts of new complexities. And through all of that, Janet has been terrific. And I thank her so much for everything she's done for Chippewa Valley High School. Janet, you are appreciated. You'll be truly missed by everybody, students, parents, and staff, staff especially. You do so much for us, and we wish you all the best for your retirement.
Thank you.[971.62][971.62](APPLAUSE).
So the first thing I noticed was, are you wearing contacts?
I'm not.
How'd you do that? You read that? You read that on your phone?
I did.
Oh, I'm extremely jealous.
It's not getting easier.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. The next time you come in us out here, we'll know it's time to send you to the eye doctor. Anyways, Janet, congratulations. Thank you for 14 years of service. Where did you serve in 14 years?
Serve.
Yeah, as we call it, served. Where'd you serve?
First, I started off at Shawnee Elementary.
Okay.
And then...
Very good. And did you keep a book of interesting things out of the attendance office?
Oh, no. No, that wouldn't surprise me.
That's right. It's like HIPAA or something like that. You can't report those excuses. But really, I concur with what Todd said. Your role is so important. I mean, all of our clerical staff fill very important needs within our district, and you're key. You're the first, really, to many of our students during the day, or phone calls to parents. You are so key, just for what they think of our district. So thank you for 14 years of service. I have here the resolution, which was read by Ms. Piden and also Retirement Bell. So would you like to say anything? Would you like to? You have some guests here, too. You can tell spoke guest...
I'm just short on because I'm not giving out speeches.
Okay.
I would just like to say that I've been very blessed to work with the most amazing people, and I'm going to miss them. Thank you.[1071.62][1071.62](APPLAUSE).
Janet, do you...who are the amazing people here to support you tonight? I know you have someone here that...
Oh, we have my dear friend that I met at Chippewa, Cheryl Honey, who works in the main office, and Valerie Schick. She's one of my rocks. I can always go to her when I need help, and I appreciate everything, everything from you.
All right, thank you very much.[1109.12][1109.12](APPLAUSE).
Okay, we have another resolution?
We do. We have another resolution for someone who is unable to be with us this evening. Whereas Robert Alair has served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of 25 years as a teacher. Whereas Robert Alair, through his leadership, has had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Robert Alair, a conscientious, loyal, hardworking employee, has elected to retire. And whereas Robert Alair will be missed by all his school colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the superintendent of schools and the administration, extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District on the 8th day of August 2022, be made a permanent part of the records of the school district and a copy sent to Robert Alair as an expression of our appreciation.
We wish him a long and healthy retirement. He will be missed very much. Great teacher and he's coached, and he will...he always does the commencements every year. He's the senior advisor, I think. But anyway, Rob will be missed, and of course, we wish him well. Okay, next on the agenda is E, old business. We have none at this time. And first is item F1, approved personnel transaction, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Michael Johnson to the position of assistant principal of Cheyenne-Shawnee Elementary Schools. Mr. Johnson's effective start date will be August 15, 2022.
Move.
I'll support. Moved by Mr. Sobah, supported by Ms. Piden. Rationale, please.
Mr. Johnson is being appointed to fill a vacancy created by promotion of the current assistant principal, and he meets all the qualifications of the posting.
Any questions or comments? No? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Mike.[1252.22][1252.22](APPLAUSE).
So first, I'd like to congratulate Michael and welcome to the team. And I think tonight, he's realizing that his school year starts next Monday rather than a couple Mondays after that. And he's thinking, oh, I didn't know that was part of the deal. But we're really excited about having Michael as an administrator in our school district. I know he's served in some other capacities in preparation to be part of the administrative team. And he's always had a great attitude, and I know he'll bring a lot of energy and excitement to our team. And therefore, we have a lot of lucky students, teachers, and families out there to have Michael on board. So, Michael, go ahead. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Roberts and the Board of Education, for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve our district in the capacity of an administrator. I've been with our district for 10 years, and within that 10 years, I've been able to work with some amazing leaders. And really, what I found is behind every amazing leader is a dynamic and talented team of staff. So I've had the pleasure to work with the team at Sequoia when I first started student teaching. I've worked with the team at Miami Elementary with Mr. Bolgren and our amazing staff there, and just recently had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Shock at Huron Elementary and Mr. Bellomo at Fox Elementary. And I'm excited to be drafted to Cheyenne Elementary and Shawnee Elementary and be their assistant principal and work with Mrs. Simon and Mr. Lewis. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I can't wait to start and hit the ground running. So, good times.
I think you have an entourage here this evening.
Let me introduce you to Team Johnson.
Yeah, Team Johnson, yes, please.
So my amazing wife, Kellyanne, who has supported me when I came to her and said, I had a prior career before I got into education, and said, you want to do what? And realized my passion and has been my rock and supported me along the way. Our children, Abigail, who's an eighth grader in Utica Schools, and Benjamin, who's going into fifth grade at Switzer Elementary. I have my mom and dad, Charlie and Mitzi Johnson, who have been a huge support along the way in going through different master's programs and my ed specialist program. I have my...all my brothers and sisters are here. So I have my sister, Chrissy.
Right.
And my older brother, Charlie.
Charlie, I saw you kiss your dad when you came in. So I was all about that.
And I have my brother Mark, who also works in the district, who really has been a big cheerleader for me since I came to the valley. Mr. Bolgren, thank you for being here. And Mrs. Shock, who we had a great time working at Huron last year, Huskies forever. And my Auntie Jeannie and my Uncle Jack are here as well.
Wow.
There they are. There they are. Nice to see you.
Oh, that's so nice.
Ms. Finelli, oh, Ms. Finelli.
Oh, my god.
We had some laughs at Fox Elementary this year, let me tell you. But it was good times. So thank you all for coming and thank you for support. And I'm ready. I'm ready. Let's do this.
Well, congratulations. Welcome to your new position.
Thank you so much.[1466.12][1466.12](APPLAUSE).
Did you ask all your guests to bring their favorite dish to pass so we can just set up on this back table over here? And did someone bring the baked beans?
No kidding.
Okay, well, all right, all right. Well, when this is over, I guess this room will be empty when everyone leaves the Johnson family, so.
Item F2, approve a personnel transaction, hire of an administrator, Mr. Roberts.
That the...a recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. Katie Schellerbarger...Schellerbarger or Barger? Barger? I'm sorry. I don't want to go through the things, saying it wrong, and I should know it. I apologize. Dr. Katie Schellerbarger to the position of assistant principal for Miami Ojibwa Elementary Schools. Dr. Schellerbarger's effective start date will be August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Ms. Piden. Rationale, please.
Dr. Schellerbarger is being appointed to fill a vacancy created by promotion of the current assistant principal, and she meets all the qualifications of the posting.
Okay, anybody have questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Dr. Schellerbarger.[1544.12][1544.12](APPLAUSE).
I would like to congratulate Dr. Schellerbarger. I know, just in interviewing her and knowing her the last few years, because of all the different roles that she has played in our school district, is what she brings to us is just an amazing can-do attitude, because she's taken on responsibilities of which she's had limited experience dealing with different groups of people and has really jumped right in and made a difference along the way. And for that reason, she's standing before us tonight as one of our newest administrators. So congratulations and welcome to the administrative team.
Thank you.[1591.72][1591.72](APPLAUSE).
I would like to start off by thanking Superintendent Roberts and all the members of the board for allowing me the opportunity to act as assistant principal for the district. I want to thank my former boss, Dr. Karen Langlands, for giving me many opportunities to grow and take on leadership roles. I also want to thank Marina Lucari for her guidance and encouragement over the past few years. Finally, I want to thank my family, friends, and coworkers that showed up today. You have supported me through my schooling and countless hours of work to help me get to this point in my career. I appreciate all of you. When I started student teaching in this district 16 years ago, I did not know anything about Chippewa Valley Schools. Over time, while teaching and working as curricular leader, I've witnessed firsthand how ahead of the curve this district is. Throughout the years, I've learned how Chippewa meets its mission of inspiring and empowering learners to achieve a lifetime of success. As an employee, I feel the district thinks of learners as not just our students, but staff as well, and I attribute most of my experience to this mission. The district assisted me achieve success, and as assistant principal, I promise to support our mission through my work with students, staff, parents, and community members. I'm honored for this opportunity and thankful for your confidence, by which in turn, I will work hard to show my dedication and commitment while continuing to achieve success along the members of Miami and Ojibwa Elementary.
Congratulations.[1680.12][1680.12](APPLAUSE). Family and friends, if you'd like to introduce them?
Yes, there's quite a bit. Well, my husband is there in the pink shirt, and I have my four kids here. So there's Jem and Jagger, the two little ones, Josh, he's a middle schooler, and Jeffrey, my going-to-be 11th grader this year. My mother-in-law is here, Jean. My mom and dad are both here, along with my niece and nephew. They also came to join us today.
Oh, nice.
Being very quiet. I have some coworkers here. My curricular leader coworkers also came to support.
Oh, nice.
Am I missing anyone else? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Dahlberg, a former employee. She was my mentor 16 years ago at Shawnee Elementary. She also came to support as well.
How nice. I had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Schellerbarger one day after school at Shawnee when I was picking up my grandson. And she told me her journey. So congratulations to her husband, because she told me that the five years it took her to get her doctorate, how she would come home, he would take over, and how she would work till midnight, 1:00 in the morning, and he kind of had to do a lot of everything. So congratulations to you. Your work was well worth it. Okay, so anyway, I want to just congratulate her. So people like that, that have a goal and work that hard toward it, I'm sure will do a great job.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.[1773.58][1773.58](APPLAUSE). Okay, next is item F3, again, approved personnel transaction, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Nyoka Wright to the position of coordinator...
of Ms. Naoka Wright to the position of Coordinator of Assessment and Data Analysis. Ms. Wright's effective start date will be August 15, 2022.
Motion, I'll make the motion.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Solva. Rationale, please.
Ms. Wright is being appointed to fill a vacancy created by her retirement, and she meets all the qualifications of the posting.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Naoka.
I'd just like to begin by congratulating Naoka on her appointment tonight to this position. She brings a track record of dedication to our school district and to the students she serves. She brings so much enthusiasm she has to all positions she's served in, and I'm sure she will bring the same to this. And I think her realm of influence, starting on August 15, will expand greatly. And because of that, our district is fortunate. So, congratulations, Naoka, on your appointment, and the microphone is yours.
Thank you. I'm so grateful for this position, and I'm trying so hard not to cry, I have my family here and they'll talk about me. But, but it's not even just about me today, it's about this district. And I want to just say something about the support that this district has given me. I am from the outside, I've been in charter schools, I've been to Connecticut and public schools, and I've seen a lot of different things. And I want to start off with the board, because you didn't know me, you took a chance on me in my first appointment, and that was to an AP role. I stayed in that role for a year. And you approved my appointment again for principal, and I want to show my gratitude and my thankfulness to you. And then, now I'm here today, and you all just did it again. And I just want to thank you for your support, your support for our families, your support for our students, your, our teachers. Your heart is in this, and I appreciate all that you do. I then want to thank Mr. Roberts. Like I said, I've been in different places, different districts. I couldn't tell you who the superintendent was. In this district, you're visible, and it means so much.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, we go on a calendar, that's because every year, you have planned out how you visit buildings. But it means so much to even be put in the books, to, to be a building that you come to. But you don't just come for those visits. I had an accident that happened with one of my kids at Clinton Valley, across the street, he got hit by a car.
Yeah.
And Mr. Roberts came that day to check on me, just to see if I was okay. And I, I thank you for that, it means a lot. So, I just want to thank you for access to you, I can call, I can email, there's always a response, and it's huge, it means a lot. And then, I want to thank Dr. Blanchard, because the first time I met Dr. Blanchard was at a job fair at Wayne State, and I prayed all the way there, hoping to be able to get into a public school. And who knew I would be able to get into a public school that was right down the street from where I lived? But it was something about Dr. Blanchard that day, he looked at my resume, and you know, that's all you have, is a resume, what's on the paper. But he stopped to talk to me, everybody else was just accepting the resumes. He stopped to talk to me to ask me about the things that were on my resume. He brought me in to do an interview, and the environment was so comfortable. You know, in interviews, it could be cold, it could be standoffish, and he made certain that that interview felt warm. And I want to thank you for that, because you started the ball to rolling for my career here in Chippewa, and I appreciate you for that. I also want to thank my CVE team. Clinton Valley is an amazing school, and if you would just talk to some of the teachers and the students and the parents in this building, that's a part of this community, you would be blown away. They love the kids, they love what they do, they're dedicated, and I've worked, like I said, with many different districts, I shouldn't say many different, two different districts, but I've never met teachers quite like the teachers that I have. And so, for me, I've learned so much from them, I've grown because of them, and they had to trust me. And so, we did a lot of amazing things this year, we've done a lot of amazing things for the last three years that I've been there, and I'm thankful for that group. So, it's really bittersweet for me concerning them. However, I want to also thank my elementary team, is such an amazing group of leaders that we have in this district, and I believe that it's because of all of you. But we have such a great group that I never felt like I started from ground zero. The minute I hit the floor with being a principal in this district, I didn't know elementary, I knew middle school, I knew a little bit of high school, but I didn't know elementary. But every one of those principals that you have in elementary, I could call, and they were there. Craig Bolgren came and brought me tables, him and Mark, because I needed tables. I sent a text out, and two seconds later, he said, I'm there. Andrea came and helped me do landscaping. I mean, Kelly listened to so many different calls that I had. We have such a supportive team that I never felt like I had to start from ground zero. I've always felt like I, I rose to the occasion. And I think that because of our group, the reason why our group is the way it is, has everything to do with Marina Lucari. And I have to say something about her, she's so humble, she's so dedicated, she loves the kids, she loves the parents, she loves the family, and it shows. And so, I'm so thankful for her, because when I first became the principal at Clinton Valley, Dr. Blanchard says to me that he was going to get with Marina and make certain that we connect. I came in in June, and Marina was on a excursion, she was on a trip, and I simply texted her. And the minute I texted her, she sent me all of this stuff to get me started while she was on vacation, she didn't have to do that. And so, I'm so thankful for her, I'm thankful for her leadership, I'm thankful for her advice. You can call her at 10 o'clock at night, and she's going to give you the right advice, she's going to answer the phone, and I'm thankful. So, the last group that I want to thank is my family. I, I'm, I'm a lot for my family. So, like, different events, I come with my laptop, and they know that even though we have our family events, I'm working. And they have put up with me for years for being like this. But I am dedicated to the families, I'm dedicated to the kids, and I'm dedicated to my teachers. And I just have to say that I thank them for them having patience and love for me. So, I just want to kind of end with this quote, because I love the support here at Clinton, or at Chippewa. But Maya Angelou had this quote, and it says, "People will remember what you said, people will remember what you've done." But they will, and I think I said it wrong, people will forget what you said, people will forget what you've done, but they will never forget how you made them feel.
Yeah.
And you have always made me feel like I was a part of something great. So, I thank all of you today.
Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment. I learned some really interesting things in what you just said, Naoka. First of all, we're short grounds employees, and I'll be calling Andrea. Andrea, can you go over the landscape of that building, pull some weeds? We're short in our maintenance departments now, I got Craig and Mark, appreciate that. And I would like to just point out that Naoka's background's a little bit different. You know, she's coming into a position where she's going to be dealing with a lot of data. And her background, actually, her undergraduate, her bachelor's degree is in finance, so she is a person who has a background in numbers. And also, I know her and her husband has, have owned and operated 7-11s in their past. And I think anyone that can keep the frozen Coke machine and the hot dogs on a roller going while you take care of customers is a highly organized person with a mission. So, you'll be, you'll be a great addition to our central office team, and that will certainly positively impact our schools and our students. So, congratulations to you, Naoka.
Naoka, didn't I, you didn't introduce your family to us, so I, do you mind? They can just stand up back there.
Um, I have my oldest daughter, we have a marriage, she's married, and her husband's here. I was going to have my oldest family here, but I'm kind of glad I didn't.
That's because the Johnson team took up all the space.
Um, and my husband, who is like my rock, he is, um, busy, so he's not here.
Well, Clinton Valley will miss you, and I'm sure you'll do a great job in your new position, so congratulations. All right, next is F4, another personnel transaction, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Ebony Carter to the position of Outreach and At-Risk Specialist. Ms. Carter's effective start date will be August 15, 2022.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Piden, supported by Mr. Pearl. Rationale, please.
Ms. Carter is being appointed to fill a new grant-funded position, she meets all the qualifications of the posting.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I just want to explain something here. Something just seems to not be right. I specifically asked Mr. Roberts if everything was okay Monday, July 11, when I found out that Ms. Ebony Carter had resigned. I was surprised. She was involved in a lot of things at the time, I heard nothing but good things, I was just a little shocked when I heard she had resigned. His response was regarding the AP at DHS, it is simply a personal decision, she resigned good terms, she liked DHS, and we liked her. Nothing had descended to me about her going through the process, or even being through the process of another position, which I just found out about, okay? Lot of questions I need to get answered, there's a lot of confusion, things that have been just avoided. Why does she have to resign? As everybody knows, it's all too common that when I ask for information, I'm either denied or information is kept from me. I guess something, I don't feel comfortable about this, something just seems not right. So, that's why I just wanted to explain why my vote will be no.
Okay, is that all?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Mr., okay, motion passes. Is Ebony here?
Ebony is on vacation, and I told her that she should make sure, she asked about being here, but she's out of the state. And I told her that that's where she should be, she has a family vacation.
Okay, well, congratulations to Ebony, I know she'll do a great job. Next is item F5, approve McComb Intermediate School District.
We're done with these. Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education grant an access easement on the property line on the south side of Ojibwa Elementary to the McComb Intermediate School District.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Piden, supported by Mr. Pearl. Rationale, please.
The McComb Intermediate School District is requesting an access easement on the south side of Ojibwa Elementary School to construct a parking lot extension for Glenn Peters Elementary School. A description and plan of the proposed easement is attached for your reference.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I have a question about this one also.
Okay.
I actually went over there and I looked at it, and I really don't see a critical reason why they would need it. I don't know, is there something, because everything I got didn't explain why they actually needed it, it was just kind of a new layout, boundary lines, it's only a few feet. Is there a reason, is there something that was missing, first of all, that I didn't get? Second of all, I mean, I'm just curious what the reason is they want us to technically give this to them. I mean, well, I guess not technically, they're willing to give us a dollar for it, but I mean, they need this.
Have you ever seen their parking lot?
Yes, I have. In fact, I was just over there.
They're on the grass, people, when there's, they're parked on the grass and on the street.
Okay, but four feet, is that going to make a difference? I mean, we didn't get anything explaining this, why they needed, they just say, all I got was something saying, can you give it to us?
Well, it says construct a parking lot extension.
Yeah, they're putting a parking lot, yeah.
Well, okay, but, yeah, I can, I can give some more information on that.
We have a slide up on the screen right now, which shows the impacted area, and it's in red. So, you see, what you see below the red rectangle is, is Peters School. Peters School is extremely crowded, and the parking lot is, is an issue there, and they're really landlocked. So, does the, does the next slide go in closer, or, I'm not sure, there were two slides, maybe this is the, this is the close one. All right. No, it's okay, this is fine. So, what, what that shows inside that red square is a fence. And what will happen is, is that fence is going to be moved four feet closer to our parking lot. It will have absolutely no impact on our parking lot, how it functions, so our, how we operate Ojibwa will not be impacted by this. But by giving them access to that easement, they then can create a drive around that school to drop off and pick up students. And as you know, they have, Glenn Peters has kids with disabilities, and so there's a lot of transportation issues with these, with these students, and they, they wanted to be able to have easier access to the building, considering the, 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 the state of their current parking lot with the number of cars that are there. So, that's the whole purpose. This will not impact the functioning of our school at all. I guess the, the good thing that comes out of this is that space now, they will maintain, so that saves us a little effort on that, on that border there with work that we might do in that area. So, so that's, that's, that's the reason.
Okay, the fence is actually about three feet away from our curb for the parking. So, if we move it up four feet, it will be in our parking lot. Or, I don't know where the boundary exactly is, or if it is on our parking lot or if it's at the fence.
Yeah.
But at the same time, the area is only probably about, what, 10, 12 feet wide as it is, so you're saying it's not for parking, it's for driving around?
Yeah, they're going to make a loop around that school.
Okay, so, it keeps on being referred as parking, and that's one of the things that was confusing. Now, at the same time, do they own the, from the parking lot to this red triangle, do they own that area, or should we actually extend that to show where the red triangle they're actually getting? Because the fence line is a straight fence line right along our parking lot. So, if we just go by this little triangle area, then there's going to be a section between the parking lot and the red triangle, that's still going to be grass, that they, do they need that too, or how, how does that work? Do they own it already?
According to what they need, they need four feet, and we can give it without going into our parking lot.
Because if you move the fence over four feet, it's going to be in the parking lot.
Yeah, I have not gone out there myself and measured that or anything like that, but we have four feet to give, I mean, we've had it surveyed, and that's all the information that's included with the board packet, is, is all the survey drawings.
A very wise man once told me, the value in land is because they're not making any more. So, with that being said, I guess, I don't like to give away things without an explanation at least. And it just seems very confusing. And it seems like they would have sent something over explaining exactly why they need it, what they plan on doing, instead of saying, here's the new boundaries, just give us the land for a dollar. And that seems to what I, what I have received, so, okay.
Um, okay, anyone else? We have Mr. Pearl.
There's a detailed survey, Exhibit A, that shows four feet, which isn't much, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
But it's 500 feet long to allow them to drive around. So, there's a pretty extensive survey, and, you know, there's, while there's no obligation to issue an easement, I I think it it's pretty needed for them. When the is an example, when they did the roundabouts, I was on the board and Romeo Ponkin, they didn't ask us, they just took it, you know, for the for easements from us. At least they're asking for this little bit. We had to give them quite a bit so they could do the roundabouts. They gave us no choice.
Okay, but who took it?
The only thing we were able to negotiate was having them move the all the fiber optics at their expense.
So now who took that, Mr. Pearl?
Macomb County Road Commission.
Okay, now, this wouldn't be the Macomb County Road Commission.
No, what I'm saying is we didn't have a choice there.
That would be a different situation, because there's other things that would come into play, as we probably both know. This is just moving a property line over. And I guess I didn't get any extensive survey that you're saying right there. I just got a couple drawings. I just received a couple drawings that showed the new. And that doesn't really tell me anything. It just says a and only written thing says that they're willing to give. It's an agreement to give us a dollar for that land. Okay, well, I have no problem with that if they really need it. But the problem I have is they're not telling us why or telling me why they actually need it. Because first of all, they're saying parking, but it's not to extend the parking, it's to make a drive around. Little bit of difference. Okay, so I mean, right there, it's not describing things that they want. If they want the property, you think they would try and sell me out of it?
I read something in the original thing that came out with our packet that it was to create a drive for their parking.
It said parking, so I don't I'm not sure.
It said access drive. And I remember that we have received.
Yes.
But there is no parking there. So I guess the bottom line is is it wasn't described very good.
It connects to their parking.
But well, according to this red triangle, it's not connected to their parking. See, I mean. If you're gonna look right between, well, now, see, this one's long, the other one ended here. But still, how are they gonna get from here to there if our property line goes all the way? Because according to the drawings, it does, it goes all the way. So do they need the whole thing? Do they just need that area? Do they I mean, none of this was explained, and this is why it's confusing.
It's it's on the site plan.
Yep.
So I I agree that the picture that's currently up is rather confusing. But if you look at the site plan, it extends all the way down to the Hydenrick side of the property.
500 feet, yeah.
But now, see, it still doesn't say what they're looking to do, though. So that was the whole question. I mean, again, it's just not explained very good. If that's a. Yeah, see, it's. Yeah, that's exactly what I got, just nothing very detailed, very good.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda is F6. Just one second, so sorry. Change order summary, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the 2018 bond issued change order summary report for the month of June 2022.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll support it. Rationale, please.
This work consists of changes to existing contracts for the purpose of owner requested work, DDoCs, COE compliance, or hidden conditions on the construction and equipment projects. All amounts are within the contingency budget allocation. This report was reviewed with the Building and Site Subcommittee on Monday, July 11, 2022. And funding will come from the 2018 Bundling Building and Site Fund.
Okay. Do I have questions or comments from the board members?
Is this change order summary? So this is regarding all the change orders that were discussed on July 11?
Yeah. Okay, is that it? Is that all, or did you have other comments, Mr. Boitovich?
I did. I talked to Michael earlier. And there's a couple things that I'm very curious on. Hope to get some detailed information here. The prices seem to be way out of line. I could be wrong. That's why I was asking for more information.
Michael. Oh, that Michael, okay. All right. All right, so here, no one else has anything they want to ask? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries. Okay. Next is new item F7. Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Janelle Carey Youngblood to the position of Director of Food Service and Nutrition. Ms. Youngblood's effective start date is still to be determined.
I'll support. Moved by Mr. Solva, supported by Ms. Pyden. Rationale, please.
Ms. Youngblood is being appointed to fill a vacancy created by a resignation, and she meets all the qualifications of the posting.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is item. She's not here.
She's not here. But do we want to do some photographs with our new people?
Sure.
And then, so we take just a short recess at this time in order to do some photographs? And then they they're I think they have some sort of a potluck dinner scheduled somewhere that they want to they want to get to.
To Dairy Queen.
Yeah. The creamy French-style green beans are getting cold. So let's have let's have all of our new hires that we did the motions for this evening come up. And board members will be in pictures with them.
All right, we're reconvening. And next on the agenda is from the community and our first person that would like to speak is Melody Perrin. If you could come to the microphone, please.
Good evening. As we look at our government, we see it is set up with checks and balance system. It is set up for a good reason because there are more viewpoints than our own and we don't often see everything. It provides a means to hopefully assure us that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So I'm encouraging you to see those of us who come before you each meeting as that same check and balance to assist you with not missing something of importance and significance. I'm here with the flashing warning light again because I believe you unknowingly are allowing something to happen that you wouldn't allow if you knew it was in our schools. We want to provide all our students with a variety of material and literature and this is often done through the use of libraries. I recently learned that you have a library media specialist, not librarians, in all of the schools. While they have training library area, it is not always adequate to make the best decisions for purchasing materials even with your guidelines. I believe it will be very apparent to you that they have violated your own guidelines and purchased some material that you would agree is not appropriate. I am handing you copies of the literature as well as books I checked out at the public library with a few of the pages marked for your viewing. As you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. Besides, it would be viewed as highly offensive and pornographic for me to read it out loud. This, this is a warning that you will find on all of these books that are listed on the book list, which, which also is included on the book, Water for Elephants, which is found in one of your middle school libraries. The warning reads, "You are about to access material and may contain content of adult nature. These files may include pictures and materials some viewers may find offensive. If you are under the age of 18 or if such material offends you or if it is illegal for you to view these materials, please exit now." I asked the librarian for clarification for myself for what defines a young adult, for the young adult books. I was told it was 11 to 12 years of age and up. He also stated, quote, "Of course, parent input would be the best for that section of the library." I also spoke to another librarian to learn about these books. When I gave her the titles, she immediately said, "Oh, those are adult books," and was kind of surprised. Chippewa's guidelines state that reading material, quote, "Be appropriate for recommended levels." We don't service adults in the district, in our district. Chippewa has violated their own guidelines by having adult books and young adult books with warnings on them, such as this. You must ask yourself, why do we have, why do you have adult books in our schools for our students that are not adults? I hope after you look at these books that I have handed you, you would agree that the adult books do not belong in the children's library. I truly believe you are unaware of these books. We as parents and the community members are providing you with a voice of concern and know you will make the right decision to remove adult material from our children's education. And you will, what I've handed you is a list of some of the books that are already existing in your libraries. And I've also just given you two graphic pictures from two of the books that are adult books. And I pulled the books from the library to show that I wasn't pulling these from some other place. They're actually from those two books that are, that are being handed out there. I just really believe you honestly, I genuinely really believe that you're honestly not aware of it and you want to make the right decision for the students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perrin. I appreciate it. The next person is Mr. Stan Shipley. If you'd like to come to the microphone, please.
Good evening. I'm just here to harass you about the computer thing again.
[laughing]
Today, and I'm not going to mention either of these people just talk about the positions, we hired an assessment, assessment and data analysis coordinator. I hope we can look at the data analysis that's already been done on the negative impact on computers when they're used by students in a school setting daily. I hope we can look at the assessment data that comes from that and make the right decision regarding to the amount of time kids are on computers in our district. We also hired an outreach and at-risk specialist. As I mentioned before, kids who are already struggling, kids who are already at risk are the kids who are most negatively affected by having a computer open in front of them all day in the classroom. You know, we, I've heard Chippewa Valley radio commercial where we were promoting the one-to-one computers. Can we be the district that promotes the idea that we do computers right? Let us promote, hey, it's not a lack of funding that your kids aren't on computers all day. We have one-to-one computers, but we're using them in an appropriate and limited fashion based on the data that says this is the best way to do this and this is what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Okay. Do you have a comment?
Well, I just, the books you handed, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
But they're from the Clinton McCollum Public Library.
Yes.
So...
Are they, you said...
They are books that are in your library.
She's got a list, too.
If you look at the list, it shows where they're at.
Yeah, it shows where they're at.
In your, in your school.
But you got these from the...
I got those from the public library because, you know, it's all closed right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So I went there and also it let me know where I was able to get it from, which was the adult section of the library.
I believe she said she, it's to show that the pages did come out of those books?
Yeah, and also so you can see I didn't fabricate pictures that I provided for you and information that exists in them.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you.
I was originally a little confused about it too, but then I saw on your second page what schools they're in and so forth.
So I tried to get it condensed in three words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it, we really do. Okay, next item in, on the agenda is of and by the board members. Anybody here?
No.
Sorry, H is Union Communication, my apology.
Okay, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I don't think, is there anyone?
No, there's no one here. So next, after that is administrative reports.
All right, just a few things today. First of all, we hired quite a few people tonight and as is customary, I'd like to recognize our many central office administrators and building administrators for their efforts to complete these tasks. These are very involved when you hire people for positions and Human Resources does a great job of organizing everything and Educational Services is involved in all aspects of interviews. So congratulations or thank you to those people who served this district so well in that capacity. I also want to recognize Rob Alair. He was mentioned as a retiree tonight who cannot be here and I just, you know, Rob went above and beyond in many ways and I just, I know him, I know he coached some things early in his career, did not know him in that capacity, but I know later on he came to the rescue of the Mohegan basketball team when they won state championships and Rob would teach all day at Dakota and come over and coach Mohegan's basketball, so I want to recognize him for that. I also want to draw your attention to something that's in your board packet tonight. It's a kind of initiative we're going to be undertaking at Central Office this year. So there's a document in there called Thought Exchange. It's a kind of a glossy looking sheet with a front and back, how Thought Exchange works. So we're going to be using a community staff feedback tool this year is a little bit different. And so I want to just spend a minute talking about that because you might hear more about it as we proceed through the year and I'll come to you with some information I've learned through using Thought Exchange. So we, we, the goal of Thought Exchange is really to get more accurate data from whoever it is we want that data from. So we might get data from staff, we might get data from older students, it'd be more appropriate with older students and, and, and our parents and, and/or community members. So if you look at the, the sheet that I've referenced, it's got a couple steps on the front, you'll see create an exchange. So it's called Thought Exchange. So Thought Exchange is, is an electronic way to send out questions to whomever it is you want information from and they respond. And generally those questions are open-ended and Thought Exchange then allows people to not only give their opinion on something, but then the purpose of it is, is they read what other people have written and they indicate what other people have said that is meaningful to them. So they almost like put a check mark next to someone's response saying, "That's a meaningful response to me." So what you really want in Thought Exchange is for the strongest ideas with whoever you're surveying, surveying to rise to the top by other people reading them and saying, "Yeah, that's important." So you can, you can send these out with as few as 10 people to 10,000 people. It works the same way and that way you get a, you get a broad spectrum of ideas that rise to the top within either our staff or our community. And that allows us to take action on that. So I want to, I have two short, they're very short, they're like a minute each, two videos and, there's Sarah. And would you do the first one, and this is just kind of a really broad overview of Thought Exchange and how it works?
The enterprise discussion management platform that gives leaders the ability to solve complex problems and quickly align groups from 10 people to 10,000 plus. In just a few steps, Thought Exchange makes it easy to gather valuable unbiased input. Leaders use these novel insights to drive better alignment, better strategies, and better performance. Every exchange starts with an open-ended question that the exchange leader shares with their group through a unique link. Participants can join the exchange and share their thoughts, feedback, and ideas anonymously thanks to our patented anti-bias platform. They can also rate other participants' ideas and see which of the group's responses have the most support. Exchange leaders can instantly access value-rich analytics and uncover unique insights, powering precise and informed decisions that actually stick. Whether you're looking to hear from your workforce or connect with your community, we've got a tailored solution for you. Thought Exchange: Take decisive action that everyone supports.
So what I want to point out with this is, is how it might be used with different constituencies. So for example, if we are, if we are implementing a new curriculum, you, you might do a thought exchange with those people implementing it, asking, asking them what's going well with the implementation of the curriculum and what might we do to help it be more successful. So if we're going to implement, just say, say a new, new math program, grades K to 3, it might be a way to, you might use this to survey your K to 3 teachers to have them say what is good about, what's going on and, and what might we do to make it better. Then, so teachers who participate in this can then indicate which Thought Exchange answers given by other people might really resonate with them. And so that way their ideas, the ideas that are most commonly held kind of rise to the top so that things can be addressed. Another example of using this might be with, with parents. It might be with staff regarding our strategic plan. So, and what Thought Exchange wants you to do is send out a pretty, pretty broad question and they use their analytics to narrow it down to what's really important. So for example, we have three goal areas in, in, in the strategic plan. One is technology. And so we might, we might just put out a broad question and believe me, we've got work to do with this and understanding how to do, how to, how to ask a good question is part of it. So I'm sharing this with you now because we will start sharing this with our administrative team next, next week and I want you to know about, when you hear about this, but I also want you to know there's a learning curve for us in doing this and we're working with Thought Exchange on, on how to do that. But I don't have all the answers at this time because I, I, my experience of doing this is nil. You might, you might ask the community and you might ask the staff and compare differences about technology and the implementation of one-to-one on what's working well and what might, what might we change to make it work better. So that will give us information. Just, we have a culture goal in our district, so we might ask about acceptance of students across our district. And we ask parents, "Do you, do you believe your child feels accepted in school? What can we do to make your child feel a greater sense of belonging?" And then we, so I've already mentioned, we can do that with curriculum, we can do it with technology, we can do it with culture, we can do it with various groups. You can disaggregate the data. There's a template you use to put a question out there and so you can disaggregate your data. There's another short video of a, of a superintendent who uses it from the West Coast, I believe.
The level of, what it brings to me as a leader is that I know that we have the ability now through this partnership as a system to really hear from a vast array of staff and community members on what's important to them. And we didn't really have that mechanism before. We can put out a survey, we can ask the question, "What do you think about X?", but at the end of the day, X may not be what people really want to talk about. They may want to be talking to us about something entirely different. And the fact that I feel we now have a better sense of what matters to the community based on this has, I think, helped us do a better job of not just listening but acting based on what we've heard from the community.
So, and I'm going to end with this right now. So it's used in Ann Arbor. It's also used in Lance Cruz. Those are two local districts that I know, I don't know of others. So here was a, an exchange that Ann Arbor put out. "Based on your experience and perspective, what do you feel are the most important needs and priorities as we serve and support our students and allocate resources across our school communities?" That's it. That's the question that goes out. So that's pretty broad. So with that, you get, you can instantly, once you're, once you're done, and I didn't give you all this because I didn't want to get too much in the weeds tonight, but these are the analytic reports that based on what they, how they respond, that you get from Thought Exchange. So this one just shows number of participants, the number of thoughts expressed and, and the, the ratings and how things were rated. Then you get into the disaggregation of who, who participated in this. And then you get in, and it's all anonymous, there's no names attached with anything. Then you get into what, what, what are the ideas that resonate most with these people? For example, in Ann Arbor with this question, the number one, the number one issue that resonated with the people who were asked to participate was attracting, hiring, and/or retaining high-quality professionals and support staff. And we know we went through some of that last year and we're continuing to go through that with our, with our staffing, so that came up. That was mental health supports, academic supports. And if you remember, there was a lot of talk, controversy maybe, in, in Ann Arbor last year about, they, they did not run, they did not run SAT programs because they couldn't staff them. And that was, there was a lot of community...
Okay.
...concern about that. And that ended up further down the list, but it was on the list. So that's the kind of information you get back, they break it into bar graphs, blah, 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 all that stuff. And so we will start this, after our administrative meeting next week, we're going to just send out a trial exchange with our administrators with a, with a broad question, just to practice with it. And then what we hope to do is to do something similar with our, with our parents prior to the start of the school year, to start collecting some data and see what our community is thinking about different issues.
Oh, that's great.
Okay.
Just, I don't know if you know the answer to this, maybe Sarah does. So is this like an app that they have to get or is it, is it pushed to them through...
It's pushed to them.
Like their email or whatever?
Yeah. So what, what you do is you do your Thought Exchange and they give you the template and then you take, you take the Thought Exchange and put it into your, into email. So you can cut and paste and put the Thought Exchange into email.
So there's a link for them to click?
There's a link they click in the email and then all the information goes back to Thought Exchange servers.
So in, we would like notify people ahead of time, like the community ahead of time that we're starting this process, blah, blah, blah. So they know we're looking for it.
Right. We won't just, yeah, we'll, we'll send some information to them prior that they can expect to see this so that they know where they're, same, same with our, and we'll, we're starting next week by talking with our administrative team, both Central Office and Building Administrative Team about this because hopefully over time, this is a tool that has pretty unlimited use within our district. That we, that building principals that they feel like, you know, they have a need in their building can use this.
Yeah, I think it's great. Sounds great.
So...
I like the ability to gather information from people, it's always helpful, I think.
So, and I'll share more with this as we collect and do this and we get the information back and it comes back in the Thought Exchange report format and I can share the data with you as we can all learn along the way.
Yeah.
Might even do one with the board.
Okay.
A little practice.
Sounds, sounds good.
And that's it for administrative reports.
Okay, and I assume curriculum has nothing new?
We have any, any curricul, no, not tonight.
Okay. Item K, oven by board members. Anyone have anything they would like to tell, anything on your mind?
Did you guys see that thing at, at the Girl Scout group from Ojibwa?
Yeah, it was really nice.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Mm-hmm. It was.
They created a food pantry in their parking lot?
Yes.
And stocked it and then it's, take what you need and then drop off if you need to or want to.
Yeah, that is, that's really great.
Yeah, it's nice.
And they're going to turn it over to student, the student government group, right?
I think so.
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Says a lot about people in our community, which is great. Robert, anything?
Not today.
George?
Not today.
Beth?
Um, no, I would just like to congratulate all of our new administrators. They are certainly an impressive bunch and thank you to Dr. Blanchard because I know the amount of work that goes into hiring and finding and recruiting such people. It's greatly appreciated that you have worked so hard to find such an exemplary group that you've put together.
Great. Jen?
No, I just agree with Beth and...
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I did find one employee.
You did?
And they qualified.
[laughing]
They asked me to find people and I, the lady worked at other schools and was already qualified for the job.
Oh, great.
She's going to be working at Clinton Valley.
That's awesome.
As a...
Thank you, Ken.
Looking for special education kids and out there, so I thought that was...
Yeah.
We need, we need good people and...
Yes.
And all of them that hired tonight sounded excellent. So thank you for everything you do and a little bit of help I gave you.
I asked the question earlier of Mr. Roberts and Adam about Naoka and the position that I congratulated for, I think she's really excellent, she has been since she's been here. But unless we get a new principal, that she will be at Clinton Valley starting the school year if we don't get anybody, just because I know I was concerned about it and I figured other board members might also, you know, have a concern about...
Who's that?
Naoka?
Yeah.
She's the current principal at, or she was the current principal at Chippewa, uh, Clinton Valley. And so she was just promoted to the data, you know, do, so if they don't find someone, a new principal at, to, to go to Clinton Valley to start the school year, Naoka will stay there until they find someone to...
I didn't know that.
Yeah. I just happened to ask before the meeting because, or after...
Yeah, I realized there was a, something missing there.
Yeah, I was a little concerned. And that is it. Summer's almost over. It's kind of, kind of crazy and I'm looking forward to the school year and I'm sure the parents are too and I am happy to hear we're going to be reaching out to people to get, gather data. All right, and do I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Move.
So move by Ms. Demingsak, supported by Ms. Tatum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Our, we are adjourned at 7:50.